Hi everybody, I hope everyone's doing well. Welcome to this final meeting of S and R for 2024. Meeting stays open to the public and there's always been webcast and there's no items that contain any exempt information. We've received one remit question for today's meeting. A written response has already been provided to the questioner and no supplementary question has been received, so there's no questions to be asked today by members of the public. If I could just ask everyone to switch phones to silent, there's no fire test planned and if there's an emergency evacuation, then as always, follow the staff. I will ask each member of the committee to introduce themselves and then I'll ask the officers to introduce themselves. So as always, starting on my left, but first let me just introduce myself. I'm Tom Hearn, I'm the leader of the council and Chair of the Committee.
Councillor Underdare, and Sir Chair of Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee.
Douglas Johnson, Chair of Housing.
Sahira Nas, Chair of Finance.
Good afternoon, I'm the Chair of Licensing Subcommittee.
Good afternoon, Chair Ibuullah, I'm acting as a substitute for councillor Dondell.
Fran Bellbin, Deputy Leader of the Council and Deputy Chair of the Committee.
Ben Miskel, Chair of Transport, Regeneration and Climate.
Catherine Ossen, Chair of Western Street Scene.
Chef Hamid Eggleton Ward.
Curtis Crossling, Chair of Communities, Parks and Leisure.
Martin Smith, I'm Chair of Economic Development, Skills and Culture.
My name is Diane Hurst and I'm an elected member for Richmond Ward.
Thanks very much, everybody, and I'll start on my left over here, please, thank you.
Good afternoon, David Hollis, General Counsel.
Afternoon, James Henderson, Director for Policy and Democratic Engagement.
Afternoon, Greg Al, Director of Public Health and Integrated Commissioning.
Hi everyone, Claire Taylor, Chief Operating Officer.
Craig Rogers, Democratic Services.
Better regular Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Good afternoon, Ashman Ali, Executive Director of Neighbours.
Afternoon, Kate Martin, Executive Director, City Futures.
Thank you very much, everybody. So as we've noted, councillor Dondell sends apologies and councillor Ulla is stepping in today and Kate Josephs is joining us in about an hour's time. Got a ministerial visit today from George Gould, Cabinet Office Minister, about some work that we're going to be involved in with a public service reform pilot that's taking place in Sheffield. So, item two, exclusion of the press and public, there's no items as mentioned that contain any exempt information. Item three, declarations of interest, are there any members who wish to declare any interest in items on today's agenda? No, okay. Item number four, minutes of the previous meeting, which was on the 20th of November, are members happy to approve them as a correct record of our meeting? Great, thank you. Item five, public petitions, questions and statements, as I mentioned, we did have one question, a remit question, that response in line with the new public questions regime has been provided and no supplementary question was received. Item six, members' questions, none received today. Item seven, retirement of staff, and as always, I will ask members to join me in thanking staff who have retired for their many years of public service to this council and to the people of Sheffield. Are we all agreed? Thank you very much, indeed. Item number eight is our work programme and with that, let me hand over to Craig.
Thank you Chair, members have got their usual updated version of the work programme in the pack in front of them. I'll draw members' attention to the changes since we last met three weeks ago. Details of one new and one amended item are set out on page 28 and in particular, across pages 28 and 29, I draw members' attention to a cross-cutting issue, which it is proposed that the safer Sheffield Community Safety Plan be considered by CPL for submission to full council for decision, in a similar way to the way we dealt with the Gambling Act and Waste recently. Subsequent to the agenda being published, members will be aware that council last week referred to S and R, a petition on the delivery of new burial space and provision in the city. I wanted to raise this as part of your work programme discussion, as members may wish what, to consider adding this to their work programme.
Thank you very much, Craig. Yes, and just picking up on that last point, since the full council meeting one week ago, we're now in the process of setting up meetings with the Muslim Breedment Trust and with the multidisciplinary team of officers who are working on this issue and I would suggest that probably by the time we get to early New Year, we'll be in a position to have a conversation around when would be the best meeting for it to be allocated to our work programme, but I'm keen that we do so as quickly as is possible. With that in mind, are members happy to approve the work programme as is outlined in the pack, noting that additional point? Great, thank you very much, everybody. So, item number nine is the Sheffield Growth Plan, which colleagues will remember back in March this year, we approved the principles that would be informing the development of the growth plan and much work has taken place over the months since then and we are now at the point where we have the draft growth plan ahead of us for our consideration and approval today. And so with that, I will ask both Kate and Diana to just briefly introduce themselves and then introduce the item, please, thank you.
Hi, thank you Chair, Kate Martin, Executive Director for City Futures.
I'm Diana Buckley, I'm the Director of Economy, Skills and Culture.
Thank you for your time today, I'm delighted to be sat here in front of you to present and share the officer report and a draft growth plan for 2025 to 2035, a 10-year plan that builds on economic, social, community and regenerative opportunities for the city for the next 10 years. As the Chair, as the Chair mentioned as part of his introduction, this committee approved a framework for developing the Sheffield Growth Plan in March 2024 and since March, we have worked with a range of partners across the city and stakeholders to develop the growth plan that is set out in front of you today. As I said, this is a 10-year economic plan for growth for Sheffield, setting out four economic missions for the city and a strategic framework for growth, underpinned by a range of thematic strategies and delivery plans that cross-cuss a range of delivery objectives and that support the council plan. In setting out our four missions, we are aiming to achieve a growing global and green economy, growing our neighbourhoods together, celebrating and growing our vibrant and cultural creative Sheffield and a city on the move, connected with the infrastructure to grow for the future. This is an ambitious but deliverable plan and builds on firm foundations that we've put in place over the last few years to grow and prosper and enable the opportunities for our city. It builds on our uniqueness, our character and offers a route to delivery in partnership with our communities, with investors and other stakeholders across the city. This plan has been brought forward as part of a longer-term piece of engagement and I'll ask Diana to share a little bit more around that process.
Thank you Kate. So from the outset, we were aware that this growth plan had to be a city growth plan, not just a city council plan and we'd learnt a lot from the city goals process in terms of how important engagement and co-production plays in joint ownership of the plan. So considerable stakeholder engagement has informed the plan throughout its development. We started in January this year and we did 65 one-to-ones with stakeholders and an additional eight workshops with businesses, public sector partners, members, voluntary sector and developers, and this gave us the baseline of the structure and the focus of the plan which you signed off in March. Drafting started over the summer and we had a business reference group and a variety of inputs from economic experts at national level, from the mayor's economic advisory council as well as locally, and we also drew on existing evidence and commissioned new evidence where there was gaps to inform the plan. Elected members have been involved closely with all the plans' development, we've had a number of workshops with members and briefings and some detailed sessions with EDS and TRC committees, which will be leading, playing leading roles in the delivery of the plan. The full plan was then shared in September with stakeholders for a period of consultation. We've held over 20 sessions with different stakeholder groups in the, in the city and we've had a lot of engagement and comments back. They have informed the final draft of the plan substantially and we've had letters of support and noting the changes of the plan and how we've responded to the consultation. The final element was around delivery, so Kate, shall I hand that to you?
Thank you, as you can see, significant amount of stakeholder engagement and we need to place on thanks, all, thanks to partners across the city and at regional and national level that have helped us develop this draft plan today. As we move forward and as you can see in the document, we are setting out as part of our Together We Get Things Done approach, a way of delivering our, our new growth plan. This plan will be delivered in partnership through a range of collaborative approaches, building on some of our existing partnerships we have across the city, but also bringing in new, new opportunities to support the growth missions that are set out in the plan. It also sets out our next steps, which includes an investment compact, a compact that will draw together public, private, partnership and existing investment that we have across the city and our assets to collaborate and bring forward the growth ambitions over the next 10 years. Members will recall as well that in the March report, we said that we would focus on a 10-year plan with a five-year delivery phase as part of phase one and that will also be part of the investment compact work as well.
Great, thank you very much indeed and let me just place on record my thanks to everybody who has engaged with us over the development of the city's growth plan and indeed the very wide range of members who have engaged as well. I think, you know, this committee has had briefings and had the chance to input as well as the two that were mentioned, Economic Development Skills and Transport, Regeneration and Climate, but I know that there's been a lot of group engagement as well. So, I've got a number of hands, can I just see, get a sense of who would like to come in on this, I've saw a couple of hands over this side, this side, great. I'm going to come to councillor Smith, the Chair of Economic Development and Skills, and then I'll come to councillor Johnson.
Thank you Chair, I didn't realise I was going to be first. I mean, I support this work, I mean, guys, we've had lots and lots of discussions around this, so it's a really good document. One of the things though, I wonder, mention two things. First of all, for those of you that weren't there, we had an amazing event this morning to celebrate the cultural strategy, we had one for the first time and it was fantastic to see just how many organisations are stepping up to the plate to improve, but not just the life of the city, but the economy of the city, so thank you very much for organising those. On the business side of things, I know we've discussed it a lot, but could you give us your thoughts on how this plan impacts on the very small or micro businesses? One of the statistics that jumps out at me is that 86% of the businesses in Sheffield employ less than 10 people and as a council, it's easier for us to focus on the big sexy projects and what more could we or should we be doing to, to help those startups because, you know, they're our future, they're, they're the city's economy's future because they'll be the big businesses of tomorrow. So I'll shut up at that point and just invite comments.
All right, thank you, I'll take a range of comments and then come back to you, if that's okay, so councillor Johnson, please.
Very well, thank you. Want to say first of all that to recognise why it's important for the council to have a growth strategy and that, you know, that is an important reason, we need to set out as a council what we're doing and where we're going. As one of the two Green Party councillors on here, I need to say something about the whole concept of economic growth, the whole discussion about climate and, you know, us being part of, you know, a globe which is very unequal from north to south. So I'm just going to say that it is important for us to recognise that not all growth is good. So for a council that has declared a climate emergency and is, you know, taking lots of coherent steps across that field, it's important to say that, you know, the whole issue of unbridled growth can be incredibly damaging. It's the concept of, you know, if you can make money out of other people, then you do and that can be incredibly damaging, so it's important. And I'm going to say thanks for the very, quite long and iterative and collaborative process that obviously have gone through to draw together something that brings in all the stuff that people in Sheffield actually value. So specific reference to culture, as councillor Smith just said, is a really important part of it and I agree with that. Heritage, the whole sense of community, recognising that we are still a very unequal city and that if, if we weren't taking the step, then the whole concept of growth would be enjoyed by a few people, but not by very many across the city. So I, I'm not asking a question, just want to sort of recognise the process has been through and I'm aware there has been a lot of to and fro and I fully appreciate all the comments brought in by other people, but I just want to lay that out there and, you know, global, green and growing is okay, growth in lots of things, for example, the retrofit industry, we really welcome from my point of view. So yeah, thanks for that.
Great, thank you. Councillor Ossen, please.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for this, this report, this plan, I very much welcome it, I've been asking for, it feels like I've been banging on about some of these issues for many years and I'm very glad to see they're finally inside a document. I will just, I will just take issue slightly with councillor Johnson's tone in his, his comments. It is of course possible to think of situations where growth might not be good, but I think in general, we ought to be fairly gung-ho about it and, you know, if, if the occasional circumstance arises, then it's a matter effectively for the government to regulate to, to make sure bad things don't happen again. But broadly speaking, certainly as a local council, we should be absolutely gung-ho about growing the local economy and on the comment about, you know, we want it, we want it to be shared among, prosperity to be shared among the, the whole population, of course we do, of course we do. I mean, there aren't any, there aren't any poor countries with high wages, are there? There are rich countries with low wages, but there aren't any poor countries with high wages because, because they need to have the growth in order to make the high wages possible, even if it doesn't make them inevitable. So to get to the point, to get to the point. I, I, I particularly like to welcome the fact that alongside the emphasis on capital investment or transport and things like that, there is a recognition of the role of being an attractive place to live, having a strong cultural offer, having good neighbourhoods. These, as we understand, are vital in a growth strategy. People, if you are somewhere, people want to go and live, want to go and work, want to go and set up businesses, then you will prosper and that is, you know, it is, it is a, it might not be the hard-nosed view of things, but it is, I think it's had, the evidence bears that out. But just going back for a moment to the transport, for example, is there clarity? If, if, if somebody, if an agency or a government department came along and said, look, we've got £10 million to spend on transport in Sheffield to support your growth plan, are we clear, I'm putting you on the spot here, are we clear what we would say we wanted to spend that on? Thank you.
And then, I mean, I think the short answer is we would point them to the plan and say we're setting out our priorities in here, but we'll come, we'll have a, pick that up in a minute. Councillor Mohammed, please.
Thank you Chair, I mean, I echo the view that, you know, if we are to deal with some of the inequalities in this city, then we need to have growth and through growth we will get the money that we can do the social good with, so. The point I was going to make about is that it's great we've got the plan now, but I think the plan now needs to be shared much widely, so a couple of points I want to make is, within the city, we've got two universities, the both two universities have engaged in this plan, but I think we ought to now push this out to at least the management schools of both universities. I declare an interest, I've been studying business studies at management school at University Sheffield 20 years ago, I can see how important it is to sell it to our current students, Chair, because when I looked, when I look at LinkedIn or Facebook and see where my former friends and colleagues are, some of them are now in some senior positions, not just in this country, but across the world and particularly India, one or two of my close friends are CEOs of, you know, quite growing companies in, in, in that part of the world, so I think that's one thing about how we're going to actually sell this plan. And secondly, it's about ownership of the plan, like you say, it's not a city council plan and I think whether there is scope now to be able to, you know, at least our parliamentarians, our members of parliament, whether that's in the House of Lords or the House of Commons, to be able to say to them, look, whether we can provide them with a briefing to say, look, here's our plan, we want you to now go and bat for Sheffield as well and here's the opportunities, because there will be times when, you know, whether it's business leaders or political leaders, might find themselves in a room with somebody and I share my experience of being here, you know, just being in the room with the head of Qatar Airlines during my time in Brussels and just being able to use that opportunity to sell, in my case, the opportunities at the, at the then Doncaster Airport, so it's, the question is hard, what's the plans to now sell this plan to future business leaders and our political leaders? Thanks Chair.
Great, thank you very much. So I've got a couple more people who want to come in, so I'll take another round, but I'll, I'll come back. I suspect you've kind of lived and breathed this conversation around growth and the natures of, so I'm not, I don't think you necessarily need to pick up points around that unless you really want to dive back in there, but I think, you know, any other points that you want to pick up from what we've heard so far, thank you.
Thank you Chair, thank you for those questions, really helpful and really useful. I think councillor Smith, your key question was around how are we putting small to medium sized businesses, new businesses, startups and scale-ups at the heart of this plan? This committee will recall that one of the principles that we agreed as, as, as per the development of this plan was to support small and medium enterprises, startups and scale-ups to grow, flourish and develop both locally, regionally and even internationally through our city. So we've placed that and we've honoured that principle that this committee agreed as part of that. Diana, would you like to talk a little bit more about the work we're doing on that?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that statistic is really telling, that 86 have 10 employees or less, so they really are the backbone of the economy. Majority of our services through Business Sheffield are facing towards those businesses, those with 50 employees or less, but particularly the 10 cohort and we've been doing much more in the recent years around the local high street, which also includes a lot of those businesses. So we've been focusing on things like climate resilience, which impacts them in terms of energy prices and them being more sustainable, we've been working with them on digital capability and on productivity, all helping them be more resilient going forward. I think skills is another element for businesses of that size, they often want to grow and take on apprenticeships, but there's a lot of burden with that sometimes that they can't do as small businesses, so we've been looking at mechanisms where we can support them with skills development as well. I think in this plan, we have, as well as the growth principle, really focused in, in that first mission around startups, scale-up and small businesses more than any plan has before. We're recognising that large scaling wood investment is brilliant, it provides jobs, but there's also equal opportunity in scale and startups here that we can grow, actually attract as well and then they can do their growth here and that makes them much more embedded in our local economy. So we're definitely making sure that we're looking at growth through our indigenous businesses, through startup and scale-up as part of this plan.
Thank you Diana. In response to councillor Johnson's query and question around, I think it was an observation, but it is a key observation around, this is a, a green and growing plan, we've placed sustainability at the heart of our city future for the next 10 years, growing a, an economy that supports our environment and our future green economy needs as well. So that is, as councillor Johnson said, around, around our green skills, the green opportunities, maybe renewable energy well for the city, all of that is set out in this plan and it's also one of the foundation principles that this committee agreed as well to underpin the plan and so a really helpful observation there. Councillor Ossen, you quite rightly identified that the role of an attractive city is, is absolutely key and Sheffield is an attractive city, it's an important city and a very attractive city for culture, for tourism, for heritage, for our visitor economy and our destination plans and we've placed that at, at the heart of the plan, but also as one of our key missions, being bowled around being a cultural and vibrant city. This also means that the city has to have a livability to the city and that includes our housing growth and some of the community opportunities, health and wellbeing opportunities that really make a city attractive, not just to visit, but to stay and as a city of sanctuary, it's really important and that we have the plans for current communities and the new communities that may join us over the next 10 years as well. I think your other question was around the transport piece, I'd widen that out, out, councillor Ossen, actually, this plan sets out opportunities for, for the infrastructure that we need as the fourth largest city to grow and flourish, including our connective city and transport, which is absolutely imperative and how people move around the city to enjoy the city, live, work and play is really important, but actually that broader infrastructure around our utilities, our energy, our heat, our power, we have to take decisions now, not only for the next 10 years, but for those longer-term infrastructure needs that we need as a growing city that might come in 2040 and 50, so a really important question. And as to whether I would take £10 million, if it was offered, I would definitely take £10 million, I would prefer £100 million and I'd work with the Transport and Climate and Regeneration Committee to spend that money, so absolutely.
Question to councillor Miskel in that case.
Maybe to councillor Miskel. I, I think the other point was from councillor Mohammed, so thank you for that, in terms of how, the importance of partnership and you've heard from Diana and the range of partners and stakeholders that have been involved in the development of this plan, but actually engaging deeper with those partnerships, both the universities, as you, as you suggest councillor Mohammed, and the management schools will welcome their input into this further, but also how do we secure and make sure that those partnerships, those businesses are offering opportunities and that do keep those students in our city, that we have 60,000 students that come to our city, how do we keep that talent and retention? Well, that's about a city that is growing, is flourishing, has those jobs and opportunities here, as well as having the livability as part of our, our offer, well for the future, to stay, raise families here and grow your own businesses here. So I really support those, those reflections, thank you.
Thank you very much, I've got three more members who want to come in, councillor Hurst, councillor Bellbin and councillor Ulla, take them and then we'll come back to colleagues, councillor Hurst, please. Let's take councillor Bellbin and then councillor Hurst will come back to you.
Thank you and thanks to all the officers for all the work on this, it's obviously great timing alongside the government's mission around growth that these are dovetailing together, so I think that's fantastic. I just wanted to ask a question following upon something councillor Mohammed said, I totally agree, you know, we need growth in order to tackle inequality. I totally agree, you know, we need growth in order to tackle inequalities, but growth doesn't in and of itself tackle inequality, it's fantastic there's a principle in here around being fair and prosperous for all, but I just wondered if you might say a little bit more about how we might use the strategy, what kind of levers we have to ensure that growth does benefit people across the city and not just those who may be better off already.
Councillor Hurst?
Thank you for that, I swear I'd logged in earlier. Yeah, actually, Fran's just asked my question because it was to thank officers for the hard work and the collaborative way in which the strategy has been developed, but now as we move into delivery, and asking really how we took advantage of the opportunities out there to, to bring growth and develop growth into the city, particularly inclusive growth, because I'm not a great believer in trickle-down, I think you have to make a determined effort to focus on those people that don't have the skills, don't have the abilities and may need a bit more support just to get back into the world of work to help the city grow.
Thank you, and then councillor Ullah, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Kate and Diana for presenting this report. Just want to make the point that I really welcome this draft growth plan, having a plan will make our city more appealing to businesses and to investors who encourage industries and started to locate in Sheffield, thus the employment opportunities for our cities, for our city residents. Chair, this growth plan will also work to ensure all demographics of our city benefit from growth, those working towards to reducing inequalities, similar to the point made by councillor Bellbin and councillor Hurst, I would like you to please, for the benefit of our residents who may not have access to this report, elaborate on, on how this will work towards reducing inequalities, for example, you mentioned in the report, grow our neighbourhood together, and I will work on that, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, so three sort of themed questions there around the same point. Come back to Kate and Diana, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, thank you for those questions. I think, I think there's a general response actually to all of the questions which are talking around and the social and community benefits and opportunities that come out of the plan now and for in the future. The objective around being fair and prosperous for all is absolutely embedded in this plan, and you can see in some of the missions, including the mission to grow our neighbourhoods, we are focusing our growth not just on our city centre, but actually in district centres, in local communities, in areas that can flourish and prosper, on the high street linked to local neighbourhoods, and that includes growing housing, affordable housing, new opportunities for jobs, skills, employment, voluntary opportunities, working with our communities as, as part of those neighbourhood and district centre plans. This plan for growth also focuses and acknowledges some of the productivity challenges that we have across the city as well, and supports in a range of ways our current residents and future, future residents, as well as those of school age now that will be benefiting from this growth plan in 10 years' time through their, their careers, the opportunity to access work in a different way, being supported in that opportunity, maybe through apprenticeships or our work, work with colleges or our work, work with local employers as well. As we know, and we'll talk later on, on today, health, health is in strictly linked to, to our economy and also employment, and we know the benefits that come from that, but also making sure that participation in growth, in opportunities and, and jobs, careers and skills for all is accessible to all. I think that broadly draws on the three questions from councillor Hurst, Bellbin and Ullah.
Just to add to that slightly, around the differences that residents might feel on the back of this plan, which is increased wages if we tackle our productivity challenge, better and good work, we know that there are employers who are willing to make sure that employee, employees have what they need in terms of providing good work for the people of Sheffield, better access to skills and transport and better health, and I did just want to draw on the importance of transport to all of the other missions in the plan, if you cannot get to a cultural experience or to a college or a school or to a job, that is going to be one of the main barriers in implementing this plan and why it became a fourth mission in the final growth plan, so the areas, the missions are all interlinked, but totally agree with what Kate was saying. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, thanks everyone for comments and questions today. Look, I think this is a really significant report for us to be considering and hopefully approving today, it's evidence, I think, of the city thinking bigger, thinking long term, standing taller and actually saying, this, we're proud about what we're good at here in this city, building on the specialisms that we've got in advanced manufacturing, materials, health and wellbeing, culture and creative, professional services, you know, saying, this is how we see our city's economy developing, and then as a council, doing everything we can, working in partnership with our residents and the private sector crucially, to support the growth of those knowledge intensive industries that will drive the productivity growth, that will drive the wage growth that we need in this city to be able to provide more opportunities for people in this city, so I think this is a significant moment for us to be saying, this is our, we are proud about wanting to be a growing city for the next 10 years and beyond, and I would hope that people will join me now in, in approving the recommendations, which I will just make sure everyone is comfortable with. So, recommendation one, that we consider and approve, the adoption of the growth plan as set out in appendix A, that we thank stakeholders, and this is really important, for their comments and insights provided on the draft growth plan as part of two phases of engagement around this, that we request economic development skills and transport regeneration and climate, consider the growth plan, its implications at their committees, and lead on the implementation, the crucial implementation, note the work of those two committees in developing the themes that sit beneath it, endorse the development of an investment plan to guide development and the formation of an invest in growth compact, and that we endorse the action areas outlined in the report about how the council will support the delivery of growth in this city. Members happy to support all of those recommendations. Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much indeed for all of your work and for presenting today. Thank you. Right, moving then swiftly on to one of the themes which sits beneath the growth plan, almost like we planned this, item number 10 is the housing growth delivery plan, which is on page 113 of your packs, if you've got that, and there are colleagues joining us who will introduce themselves when they are settled. Excellent, would you, Anna and Alan, just for the benefit of people in the room and people who may be watching online or later, just introduce yourselves and then introduce the report, please, thank you.
Housing growth, oh, apologies. Hi, Anna Pazner, interim head of housing growth.
And I'm Onsean, I'm the interim head of regeneration.
Hi, Kate Martin, exec director, City Futures.
Okay, over to you all, please, thank you.
Hi, so housing growth plan, the housing growth plan is a five-year action plan, runs 25 to 30, it sits as a tier two plan underneath the housing strategy, it responds to the housing strategy, more homes and housing choice, the plan is very much written with the priorities that sit underneath that ambition, so it talks to the increasing affordable housing provision, the increasing the range of good quality homes for residents, accelerating regeneration and developing new lifetime neighbourhoods and building homes for the future. So this is our five-year action plan that we plan to update every year, because this is very much about the do, how do we do the strategy that we've set? It talks to the emerging Sheffield plan, so it talks about sites and how we plan to bring these sites forward, and that's for affordable housing delivery as well as private housing delivery. We have programmes that are set in the plan that we're well underway with, some that are in their infancy, and we will look to flex and change these programmes as new policy changes come through next year, looking forward to some exciting announcements in the spring or maybe summer, as they're calling it now, sprummer, I think is the word.
It's not a word.
Let's not go there. Yeah, which will help to bolster what we've already set out in this plan. Alan will probably talk through the more private sector regeneration type stuff, but for the affordable housing delivery, we've got a really ambitious plan that's embedded, and that is a combination of our own delivery through our own stock increase programme and acquisition programmes that we have, we're looking at pushing out an ambitious procurement to registered providers in the new year with HRA and general fund land that has been deemed compatible to affordable housing delivery, and that should be sometime next April, May. There are a number of different models emerging in the affordable housing arena that we're exploring and looking to see whether that can work for Sheffield. We have made sure that we've been clear within the plan about what affordable housing is, what the definition of affordable housing means in type and tenure, what it means to us as a city, and how there are various things within that affordable arena that are important to us, and we will try to look forward to pushing through our programmes. Within the plan, we also talk through the wider regeneration programmes that we've got coming forward that are very clearly set out in the city centre strategic vision, there are a number of new catalyst sites coming through over the next five to 10 years, and I'll probably let Alan just give a very quick briefing on what they are.
Thank you. So within that, we've got, identified through the city centre strategic vision, now backed up by progress in the local plan, we've got five priority locations for new housing in the city centre, the city centre remains a major focus for housing growth, and we are working hard with partners at Homes England, we're looking to bring forward new housing at Neeps End, Furness Hill, Moorfoot and also the station gateway, there'll also be a focus of new housing growth at West Bar, there'll be Devonshire Quarter and indeed beyond the city centre, we're also working hard on bringing forward development in Atticlyffe and at the Gleedless Valley. I think the partnership work that we've done so far on this, we made a good start, and we need to keep pushing hard to deliver that pace of growth moving forward.
Thanks, Alan, I'll just probably wrap up to say that this is an action plan for all housing in all areas, all types of housing is important, private and affordable at all levels, so we've tried to capture that within one plan.
Thank you very much indeed. Right, and members who would like to ask any questions, okay, I've got three, I see, I'm going to come to councillor Johnson, this is chairman of the housing committee, and then I'll come over on this side as well, thank you.
Thank you very much again. Yeah, so again, thanks to all the work that's gone into this, and as you say, it's about all types of housing across all 10 years, all, there's the whole range of everything in there, so of course it's important to say, to reflect that it's not just what we're doing as a council, but what's happening in the city and, and so. Just point on affordable housing, I just want to make the point that you might have heard me say before, there's a lot of talk about affordable housing, which has a national definition, but the big thing is also making sure there's housing that people can afford. I know you've addressed that in there, and essentially this delivery plan is about making the best use of what's available to us. Specific question I've got, it just comes out of the increasing collaborative working, and you talked about the partnerships, and certainly that's what I've noticed coming out in recent years, is there's a big improvement in the way that the council works with all the landowners, developers, et cetera, and government bodies like Homes England. You referenced the Sheffield Together partnership, which is the emerging grouping of anchor institutions that are in the city, but also, it's paragraph 2.5.4.2 on page 119, it says the Sheffield Together partnership has developed a joint housing pipeline, engaging with landowners, et cetera. What I want to ask about specifically is about bringing in all the government departments, so this has just been triggered by a discussion today about noticing that there are various sites owned possibly by various branches of the NHS being put up for sale, and what I really want to know is whether those elements of the public sector are engaging in conversations with the work that you're doing here, with our colleagues in Homes England, in housing providers like housing associations, or if that's an opportunity that we haven't yet grasped or someone hasn't yet grasped, is it a piece of work to be done? Because actually, in the government's drive to reduce the overall public estate that's not within the control of the local authority, we should be looking at that, some of those could be really, really important, and so as much as anything, so we don't get in the situation of the Old Town Hall, I know that wasn't ever envisaged as housing, but it was, a bit of public land owned by a government department, sold off fairly randomly to a private developer many years ago, and of course, our problem is it's blighted the Castle Gate area by nothing happening with it for the last 30 years.
Yeah, keep us on track, if that's all right. Thank you. I've got three colleagues over here, councillor Austin, councillor Mohammed, councillor Smith, in that order.
Thank you, yes, thank you, well done this. I have a specific question, I was talking to a housing officer yesterday, I think, look, the, the problem that we have of dampened mould is specifically, isn't it, well, in, in, in some sense, it's a, the problem that the type of housing, a lot of the type of housing we have is simply too expensive to run, in that you need to have the heating on and you need to have the little vents open, basically, for the, for the moisture to escape, and people quite understandably are closing the vents when they've paid lots of money for the heat. Are we building more of that, or have we a solution to that in, in, in the kind of new housing that we're, we're, we're hoping to bring in? Or are you, are you still gonna, are we still gonna be asking people to have the heating on and the vents open and to lose the heat that they're paying for?
Okay, thank you, councillor Mohammed, please.
I think my question is about the suburban neighbourhoods section, so what is it, what page is it, it's either page 27 on your pack or 155 in the bigger pack, in particular reference Atticlyffe and Gleedless Valley, I mean, the issue for me, both of them, is the delays that it takes to get these things off the ground, Atticlyffe's been spoken about, Atticlyffe Village for years, so for me, it's about, it's all right having a plan and strategy and growth, but what people all really want is stuff to move quickly, and that's the frustrating thing I have about the fact that, I don't know if colleagues will have numbers to hand, but the amount of planning permissions that exist already in our city, and I suspect across the country, where homes can, people could get on with them, but for whatever the reasons are, things aren't happening, so people seek permission, they gain permission, and things don't happen, and similarly, frustrating for me, Gleedless Valley is an area that, there was a lot of hope a few years back about the regeneration, and it seems to have stalled, and I just hope that lessons can be learnt from whatever happened in Gleedless Valley, that when we have other projects going down the line, that we don't also end up stalling and people being disappointed and not being able to know what the future of their state is going to be, Chair.
Thank you, I'm sure you'll be pleased to hear that we had a really first, successful first meeting of the new Gleedless Valley regeneration board back in October, and it was a really good way to bring together residents, the council and other agencies to help us to do the refresh of that master plan, and I'm sure colleagues will join me in being pleased to see that in Atticlyffe, situ are now on site with phase one of Atticlyffe Waterside, which over two phases will deliver 1,000 new homes, the first significant house building of scale in Atticlyffe for a long time, and hopefully the first of other schemes coming forward in that area, so I think things are starting to move, plans like this really help to then set the conditions and the framework, so we know where we need to move and what kinds of homes we need. Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, Chair, you've been doing your homework.
Site visits.
My question was in the, some of the themes, councillor Mohammed, the statistic that always sticks in my mind is if you look at the housing growth that we need in the city, it equates to one new home every, I think it was five and three quarter hours, it's more than four a day on average, and so basically, we've got to get on with it, and I'm conscious of the efforts that the council are making, particularly in the city centre, but to help my colleague here, last time I looked, we had about four years worth, or on average, once a site got planning permission, it was going to take several, several years for a private developer to actually get a move on and do it, so my question was around, what else can we do to speed that up? I'm also conscious that the government have made announcements targeted at local authorities about, you've got to get more housing with planning permission, you've got to do that, you've got to do that more quickly, but there have been no announcements yet around
you've got to do that more quickly, but there have been no announcements yet around the other side about how they're going to make sure that developers actually then get on and do it. So I'm wondering if you could just comment on that, please. I'm not expecting you to come up with an instant answer, but we need one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Look out for a big speech, I'm told, tomorrow by the Deputy Prime Minister about the new national planning policy framework, which may have some answers to some of your questions.
You'd be networking as well.
Colleagues, do you want to pick up any of those points?
Thank you, Chair. I'll respond on behalf of the officers and then draw my colleagues in as well. So in relation to councillor Johnson's question, which I think was two-part really, around how we're going to address affordability for everyone, this particular housing growth plan, this growth delivery plan focuses on a range of delivery. We also have adopted the overarching city housing strategy that actually does drive forward a broader and better choice of homes across the city, so affordable homes, intermediate accommodation, market homes, first-time buyer homes as well. And so, actually, a city with the growth and the opportunity that we have across the city to develop more homes, actually will need a range of homes, but affordability is absolutely key, I agree with you councillor Johnson, now and for the future. The Sheffield Together partnership is very acute to that, working with a range of housing partners, regional bodies, other funding bodies, housing associations, developers, investors, small to medium-sized builders as well, to bring forward a whole range of opportunities, both through our statutory powers, but also through this housing growth delivery plan as well. I think the second part of your question was a really important one around how we're going to enable more housing, we've identified there is a need, and can we join up with other landowners and other partners across the city? The council, a couple of years ago, secured funding from the National Property Office, which has enabled us to bring forward a one public estate programme. And so what that means in non-jargon language is, is mapping out the public-owned assets, land, community buildings, et cetera, across the city to look at opportunities where we can actually realise some of those buildings or land in a range of ownerships across the city for housing or for other use to support the growth plan as well. So we're working very closely, we have a number of years of funding, a huge amount of mapping has taken place around those lands and sites, and we're in talks now with partners such as health, et cetera, around the future of their assets, and some of the service planning as well, to make sure that we are growing our homes in the right area, but making sure that our public services, fire, police, ambulance, all the health services are located and are planning as well for that housing growth in a collaborative way with us, including how they use their land and assets. In terms of councillor Otten's question, an important one, you've mentioned the dampened moulds, but actually, if I widen that out a little bit around housing and health, are inextricably linked. We know that healthy homes increase opportunities in terms of life chances, reduced winter deaths, secure healthy outcomes for children and young people as well in terms of educational attainment, and our public health colleagues can share more about how that links. In terms of how are we making sure that we have high quality standards, which I think is the nub of the question, absolutely, we have a range of programmes, including making sure that we meet those high quality standards for future homes, the planning requirements as well as part of that, and where we can attract additional funding to make sure that we've got affordable insulation, affordable warmth programmes as part of our existing build programme, or for buildings that we might be retrofitting, et cetera, then we'll try and do that. Affordable warmth and making sure that everyone has a warm home to live in is absolutely key. Councillor Mohammed, you mentioned, I think your reflections were around the pace of the delivery. This delivery plan actually sets out a different way of delivering for the city. It moves us into a partnership model, it moves us into a public-private arrangement, and utilises all of the ways that we can bring forward housing at pace, from using our statutory duties and moving it forward through the planning process, all the way through to joint ventures, joint opportunities, and some agility around how we can acquire new sites or work with housing associations, developers, and other regeneration bodies. As part of the work, I think your question also touched on, you know, an example being with Gleedless Valley, the report that we've brought does set out a strengthened, a new direction for Gleedless Valley, and Gleedless Valley will benefit from this programme of work by having further flexibilities to bring forward homes at a different pace and at a different delivery. It's not an easy landscape, though, it does link with the markets, it does link with construction and costs and pricing, I think part of your question was more, what more can we do on this? Viability for sites, you know, we're quite a hilly city, these things can be challenges in terms of construction and development, so ensuring that we have, and we maximise inward investment, public subsidies to de-risk some of these schemes and opportunities is at the heart of the plan as well, attracting further inward investment to make it quicker, easier, and more agile to bring forward opportunities. Thank you. And then councillor Smith, again, I think you touched on a bit around pace in terms of the statistic around how quickly housing has to come forward, and again, I've touched a little bit on kind of what more can we do. I think it is about really being totally embedded, building on the strength of the housing partnership that we've got. We've got a preferred partnership arrangement with Homes England, all cities have that, we have opportunities through that partnership to bring in inward investment, to also build our own homes as well through our housing company arrangements, and then working with those housing associations, developers, investors, and other types of investment, maybe pension funds and others that meet our standards, to bring forward opportunities. So I think there's always more that we can do, but certainly, this plan moves us forward in the right direction, and to give us the best opportunity to deliver at the pace that we would want and that residents would expect.
Thank you very much. I think there's plenty of links between the last agenda item and this one, but one of the critical ones is about making sure that Sheffield is a welcoming city for people who want to invest here, so that we're getting in that investment through, whether it's through housing associations, whether it's through pension funds or other investors. We know there are people out there who want to be in the business of building homes in the city, and it's about creating those conditions where we are welcoming them to come and work with us to create the right homes that we need in the right places. Councillor Misscore, I think you wanted to come in.
Thank you, Chair. I guess it's probably important to acknowledge and just take us back to a point that you just made there, and that is about the important synergy between our growth plan and this five-year action plan, and just how important that is to allow us to deliver on that. And whilst perhaps I don't support councillor Johnson's contributions earlier, because I don't necessarily think that he buys into growth in Sheffield as much as many of us do in this room, I think it is important to acknowledge the importance of growth. I think it's also important to acknowledge the importance of housing and providing sufficient housing to deliver that economic growth that we need as a city. And we all know, don't we, that actually we want people to stay here once they've studied in Sheffield, we want people to have good quality communities to be able to live in, but we also want to be able to attract those businesses that councillor Hunt has talked about in terms of being able to invest and build new homes in the city, but also to start up businesses in the city and have sufficient housing of sufficient quality to be able to house their employees, and that's a significant driver for many businesses. I think Alan spotlighted some of the work that we're doing across our catalyst sites, and I think there was particular mention, wasn't there, to the regeneration in Attic Cliff, which is really, really positive. Then there were also some legitimate points, not related to Attic Cliff, but more broadly, about the quality of housing across our city. And councillor Hunt talked about situ being the developer for Attic Cliff Waterside. Now, we know, of course, they're on site at the moment, but I would invite colleagues to go down and see some of their existing work across the city, because I think that it does really showcase some of the good quality housing that is being produced across this city. And you can see some of it in Kellam at the moment, at Kellam Central, where you have homes that are as close to passive standard as we could possibly get, you know, allowing people to have lower energy bills. So I really do think that we'll be seeing much more of that, no doubt, as part of the development of our catalyst sites coming forward. So I would like to welcome this five-year action plan, I think it's really, really, really important, but also, I think it's important to note that we'll all be looking forward to what the Deputy Prime Minister is saying later on this week, because we see a real, real focus on this, on economic growth, on improving our economy, making sure that people have got more money in their back pockets, but also that people have got good quality homes to live in.
Thank you very much. So we've got ahead of us some, one recommendation, a commendably short recommendation, I must say, to consider and approve the adoption of the five-year housing growth delivery plan, set out in appendix A. I think councillor Austin will be pleased that there is an action plan and a delivery programme coming with this as well. So I've heard quite a lot of support for what we've heard today, colleagues happy to approve the housing growth delivery plan and the appendices. Excellent, thank you very much, another significant moment for us. Thank you all for your work. So item number 11, implementing the fair and healthy Sheffield plan, and particularly looking at the city council's role. And I think a lot of these agenda items continue to be linked, and no doubt will pick up some of what we just talked about, and maybe the importance of housing in creating a fair and healthy Sheffield. Now, to introduce the report, I'm going to ask councillor Argentio, as co-chair of the Health and Wellbeing Board, just to say a few words by introduction before we hand over to Greg.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm really proud and excited to introduce this item. It's, we deliberately have not called it a strategy, we've used language that is more accessible to the average person, and we've called it the Fair and Healthy Sheffield Plan, and it's our 10-year plan to make Sheffield a fairer and healthier city. This is not a council document, this is a partnership document of the Health and Wellbeing Board with our colleagues in the NHS, in the voluntary sector, in the university institution, the Blue Light Services, and, you know, a year of work went into this, and I want to thank the officers that have put so much energy and passion into it. We've had our moments when we've had sessions to develop it, it's not been like an easy sailing through it. And, you know, I assume you will have read the document, and what I would like you to focus on is the four radical shifts that we've agreed as partners, and those were not easy to come to, but they are really fundamental, because we've decided to work together in partnership and work differently. So I will leave it to Greg to present it properly and to answer questions.
That was a very proper introduction, thank you very much, indeed. So Greg, for the benefit of people at home, could you just introduce yourself and then add any further comments to introducing the report, please?
Thanks, Chair, and thanks councillor Argentio. Greg Fells, Director of Public Health and Integrative Commissioning, here on behalf of Helen Watson, who's poorly today, so I will do my best to channel my inner Helen, but I will fly solo. So the report is about the role of the council in the implementation of the Fair and Healthy Sheffield Plan. It is a 10-year plan, it's deliberately a 10-year plan. The broad strategy won't change, close unfair gaps in length and quality of life, how that develops over the 10-year period may well change a little bit, but the overall strategy won't change. The summary of the plan and the plan itself is in the pack, so I won't dwell on that, but it's clear, when we were doing the work on Sheffield City Goals, health and wellbeing matters to the people of Sheffield, matters enormously, that was abundantly clear, noting the conversations the committee's already had today about the growth plan and the housing growth strategy, these things all are intertwined with each other. A growth plan is predicated on a healthy population, and vice versa, good growth begets good health. So all of these things are predicated upon each other, and we play that as we go forward. The key aim of the plan, as I said, is to narrow the gap in quality and length of life as measured by healthy life expectancy, that is not easy, and will come with many, many challenges over the years, but we know that some people in Sheffield die younger and have worse health than others. That doesn't happen by accident, it happens because of the conditions that people find themselves in. So that's the aim of the plan. It is a partnership strategy, as councillor Argentio has said, it's owned by the Health and Wellbeing Board, which is a partnership of the council, the voluntary community sector, and the local NHS. The structure itself is largely built around eight building blocks, which are the same building blocks as Michael Marmot set out in his report, and that's very, very deliberate and willful. He did the evidence base for us, he did the hard work for us, and we built the strategy around that, and the four radical shifts, which actually are that radical, but achieving them will be a big shift and will be very radical, and let's not underestimate the difficulty of that. Leadership and workforce, partnership and collaboration, because no single actor can do this by themselves, the resourcing this and monitoring and accountability, who is responsible for health, by which I don't mean what the NHS does, I mean the health of the population of Sheffield. It is a strategic thing, there will not be a very detailed delivery plan because of all of the stuff that goes into it, it would be this thick, I wouldn't write it, nobody would read it, so there isn't going to be a very, very detailed delivery plan, we can talk about specific aspects of delivery as needed. I've still said it's a partnership strategy, the council is a really, 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 really important partner in that, almost everything that the council does contributes to our health and wellbeing in some way, shape, or form. So the ask in the paper is to endorse an approach where we build our thinking around does this, doing this thing, whatever the thing of the moment is, help address unfair gaps in quality and length of life? Those are easy things for me to say now, but I know full well they're difficult to enact. Section 1.12 sets out six broad areas, some around training members and officers, some around policy development and reviewing policies to ensure that we are health-focused, pro-health, pro-equity in health in our approach, ensuring that we build this thinking into the future Sheffield plan as we develop and implement that over the coming years, exploring and developing the tools to visualise the expected impacts of policy choices and bringing out into the open the trade-offs, and sometimes there are trade-offs, building pro-health, pro-equity in health activity into service planning and development of our performance and monitoring, performance monitoring and accountability framework to reflect what we're trying to do here. In all of this, I and others are really aware that, you know, we don't want to impose additional resource demands on any of the partners in the Health and Wellbeing Board, but constructively shape the way that we do our planning, our policy, our service delivery and certain implementation to narrow the gaps in health length and quality of life. And lastly, if the committee accept the three fairly short recommendations, I would suggest that we come back at a time period to be agreed by the committee and chair, a year, 18 months, two years, something of that ilk, I'll pause there, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Greg, and please send our best wishes to Helen for a speedy recovery. So do we have any questions, I see councillor Otten, I'm just thinking councillor Otten, if Greg had written a report this high, I bet you would read it all, so I'm going to come to you first, and then is there anyone else who would like to come in after the councillors?
Thank you, thank you, yes, I'll walk in this. I just want to say, actually, I feel a little bit left out in that I'd like to see more credit for the work of the Environmental Protection Service, which is almost completely kind of health-related, protecting us from health-related harms in terms of food, kitchens on, pest control, you name it. We had one of these workshops, and I think it's probably in terms of developing this a few months ago, and they said to us, what are you doing, you know, what could your department do about health? And I said, well, we're doing all these things already, I mean, it's not, it's not that hard. Also, I mean, trading standards and licensing, the work they do on illegal tobacco and alcohol, so that is a health intervention, isn't it? And the work of licensing more generally is, I think, in terms of licensed premises and the standards they have to follow, these are health, these are health interventions. So yes, it's all very good, but we're doing more than you're acknowledging in there, I think.
Okay, thank you, Jo. Look, I don't think anyone is disputing that the work that you've described is very much helping this to make sure that this city remains a healthy as possible city, and I'm sure that Greg will want to, on behalf of all of us, join and I'm sure that Greg will want to, on behalf of all of us, join me in saying thank you to the work that those teams do for their, you know, service to the city. I will just specifically come back to Greg on that point, and then councillor Hurst, I'll come to you.
Just very briefly, I agree. The vast majority of health is delivered by folk who don't have the word 'health' in their job title. Pick on a specific example, trading standards, kick doors down in the city and confiscate large volumes of illegal tobacco, illegal vapes, that saves lives, the end. It is, yes, under-acknowledged in this, but it is there. Had I had to acknowledge all of the things that all of the staff do, it would have been a report this thick, and I wouldn't have written it, you might have read it, but I 100% agree. What those teams do is spectacularly important and does save lives and reduce illness and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you, and thanks from all of us to them. Councillor Hurst, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work in developing this. I think this is possibly the single most important document that we're going to receive and read, because it does talk about the building blocks to enable people to live the best life that they can. And thank you for your courage in actually saying, well, we have to change the way we work if we're going to work together to deliver on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bellwin, please.
Thank you, and again, hugely appreciate this piece of work and the enormous number of people that have been involved in it, including, I'm sure, teams that aren't directly acknowledged within it. I suppose reflecting on that, when it comes to agreeing to receive a report and the setting impact and so on, how we, there's lots of other organisations, it states in the report, will be putting this through their own governance systems. I mean, have you any thoughts on how we might capture how we are, the impact that is happening right across the system, in terms of reporting back to us as a council? Because it involves so many partners and other organisations, this piece of work, so I just wondered if you'd reflected a bit on how that might be captured.
Thank you, Greg. Please.
Two thoughts, councillors, thank you for saying thank you, it matters. And it's a big team effort, lots and lots and lots of people have their fingerprints on this. Councillor Bellwin, I agree with you. When we come back, time will have moved on, and the issues of the day may be quite different. Two thoughts, there's arguably, one, a deep dive on a particular thing of the moment or topic of the moment, we could do that, we could tell the story about environmental protection or trading standards or housing and health, or good work and health. So we can think on that close to the time. On other organisations, that's the job of the Health and Wellbeing Boards to pull all of those together. Of notice tomorrow, and I think either in matters arising or any other business, I'm going to sweat the members of the board quite hard, have you taken this through your governance mechanisms? Obviously for the council, today is the day. I know some of them have and some of them won't, but I'm going to sweat them really, really hard on that, because it matters that all of our institutions sign up to this, because no one actor can do this alone. The board should bring them all together, and it's up to the co-chair of the board, one of them's there, to make sure that we all do that, but we will make sure that that gets captured in any follow-up report in a number of years' time.
Okay, we've just want to come in, I've got councillor Argentio and then councillor Ullot, and then I'll probably do it there, because I don't see anyone else who wants to come in.
Well, it's just an observation, and just to add to Greg's response, at the healthcare partnership meeting on Monday, for example, I picked up at the end, but Greg had already left by that point, where they were still using the old strategy at the front, and I said, we now have the new Fair and Healthy Sheffield Plan, you know, this is obsolete, could you, so we are already challenging partners.
Thank you. Councillor Ullot, please.
Thank you, Chair. My question is very simple. BAME communities probably have the worst health, sort of the worst health inequalities in our city. How do you propose to implement this plan in our BAME communities? And I also would really welcome the fact that one of the building flock mentions about the tackling racism and discrimination, at least I'm really glad that this has been acknowledged. I would like to know how this will be implemented in our diverse communities.
Councillor Ullot, thank you. Three thoughts by my way of response. One, we forced the tackling systemic racism, or the words in the plan, into that, because they weren't in the original draft, and lots of people in the first run-out of the early drafts said, no, no, you need to ensure that we acknowledge systemic racism and its impact on health and wellbeing, which we have. The answer on how is clearly easier said than done. Tackling systemic racism is a big multi-sector, multi-city thing over a long period of time. Partly that's the race equality partnership, partly that's working with and through our voluntary community sector organisations, partly that's what we do as an organisation, it's what the NHS does as an organisation, to tackle racism and discrimination in all of its activity. I don't think, no, I know I couldn't give you a pithy answer on the, and what will we do tomorrow and in a month's time, but to address that, because it's a big, broad, wicked problem, it's wicked for a purpose. But rest assured, and hold us to account in a period of time on what have we done to address that.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So we've got a number of recommendations that S and R, it's recommended to endorse the Fair and Healthy Sheffield Plan. Note the proposed activity aimed at helping shaping, sorry, the city council's policy development and service delivery in support of the plan, and that we agree to receive a report at a future meeting of this committee that assesses impact date to be determined in consultation with Greg and colleagues. Our members are happy to support those recommendations. Excellent. Thank you very much indeed. Thanks to Greg. Do pass on best wishes to Helen and many others who have contributed to this. Outrageous. Item number 12 is the Quarter Two Budget Monitoring Report, which is on page 255 of your PACs, and we are joined by Director of Finance, Philip Gregory. Philip, just for the benefit of people at home, just introduce yourself and then briefly introduce the report, please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services, I'm the council's section 151 officer. So in considering this council's budget forecast, the context of our financial position is one of significant funding reductions across the local government sector since 2010, which we reported here as part of the update on the MTFS earlier this year. The demand for many of our services, particularly those that support our most vulnerable citizens, has continued to increase following Covid and the cost of living crisis. Along with the rest of the country, the council's been impacted by the effect of increased inflation, and we've seen the cost of delivering many services rise by more than inflation. So the combination of reduced funding, increased demand and increased costs results in the financial position reported to this committee in this Q2 report, which is an overspend of £34 million, a similar position to that reported in quarter one. So this is a serious position for the council to be in. Officers are working hard to find ways to reduce costs or provide services in different ways to reduce this overspend and limit overspend occurring in future years. What we aren't seeing is a persistent failure to deliver savings that have been agreed. The current forecast estimates that of the £43 million in savings included in budgets, £40 million will be delivered this year. That's a deliver rate of over 95%. Now, these savings amounts do include additional grant income, even stripping that out, the deliver rate is above 90%. The main drivers for the overspend this year are similar to the pressures faced over the past few years, which were reported to Finance and Performance Committee a few weeks ago. The quarter two position for this committee is an overspend of £200,000 as a result of overspend in customer and transport services. You'll find a full breakdown in the table of paragraph 3.1.4, which is page 266 of your PAC. It's also worth noting that the change in the remit for Finance and Performance Committee has moved some budget responsibilities to that committee rather than this one. So council officers are clear that this is not a comfortable financial position. However, action is being taken to reduce the forecast overspend this year, and through future Sheffield, put the council into the right size and shape to be financially sustainable into the future. I'm happy to take any questions the committee might have.
Thank you very much, Philip. So do I see any people who want to come in? I'm conscious, obviously, we've got Finance Committee meeting on Monday, and this is obviously in the context as well of the budget setting process, where groups are, and all committees have been involved in the conversation around this. I would echo Philip's comments that this is clearly not a comfortable position, but it's one that we are taking steps to address and doing everything we can to make sure that this is tackled. So are there any, do I see anyone who wants to comment on this? No? Okay, in which case I think we note these, the work, I think we note the actions that are taking place as well to address the issues outlined in the report. So this is to note the updated information on the 24/25 revenue budget outturn as described in the report, including the detailed committee budget monitoring information and management actions provided. Noted. Thank you very much indeed, Philip. Item number 13 is the evaluation of local climate bonds for financing climate projects. And here we're joined by Mark, by Richard and by Leila. It's always the last one. Perfect, thank you. For, thanks very much for your patience today, and thank you for all of the work that you've done to provide us with the report today and the work underpinning it. Just for the benefit of everyone in the room and people who may be watching online or later, perhaps you could please just introduce yourselves and then introduce the report, please. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Leila Ginnavitt on the graduate scheme at the council, currently working for the climate change team.
I'm Mark Whitworth, I'm Service Manager for the Sustainability and Climate Change Team.
Richard Hallam, I'm the council's Treasury Manager.
Okay, so the report presented in front of you today, the evaluation for local climate bonds for financing climate projects, is a joint report between City Futures and the finance teams. The report is responding in part to a motion that was passed at full council in February of this year, which requested that Strategy and Resources Policy Committee investigate the use of green bonds to support climate action. But it's also a response in recognition of the latent demand for local residents to be able to contribute financially to climate projects, to receive a return on investment as well as wider engagement and participation and contributory opportunities. I think we all recognise a significant level of investment and resources required in order to enable us to reach our climate targets. And the UK Government's Climate Change Committee has estimated that between £50 to £60 billion of investment will be required each year in order to make the UK to meet its net zero targets by 2050. It's also widely acknowledged that a large proportion of this investment will be raised from the private sector, including pension funds, as was acknowledged in previous discussion on housing growth. But we shouldn't overlook the opportunity to explore other forms of funding, such as community investors. Local climate bonds provide an opportunity, a one approach that can help provide a blend of borrowing which can support climate action, helping democratised financing of climate investment and providing local residents with the opportunity to invest in local projects from as little as £5. And there are already over a dozen local authorities across the country that are utilising local climate bonds and have raised over £10 million, approximately a million pounds per council, some have raised less, some have raised just about that limit, with several of us in the process of actually offering issuances at the moment. As detailed in the report, local climate bonds are community municipal investments that enable local investors to directly invest in climate initiatives within their local communities, and they can provide a low-risk, low-return financial product. So it's worth noting that recent London Boroughs issuance was around 4%. You can get a better rate of interest on the high street, but the true value lies in fostering community engagement and contributing to climate action. Local climate bonds are structured to be cost-effective for local authorities to use, with the cost of capital being generally lower than Public Work, PWLB, Public Work Loans Board, and our evaluation that Richard's undertaken has borne this out, but noting that there are some increased risks using local climate bonds. They require more upfront work than prudential borrowing methods. However, the social value and engagement benefits that they offer present a valuable opportunity for us to engage with residents and encouraging action from communities. The local authorities that have issued local climate bonds have also used that investment to fund a range of activities and asset classes, from things that you'd expect, like solar panels and other renewable installations, building retrofit, EV infrastructure, as well as on biodiversity and conservation projects. In terms of scalability, several of the local authorities who've completed one issuance are now proceeding to a second issuance using the economies of scale, given that they've got the processes and the internal infrastructure already in place, in order to enable them to raise further money to invest into more programmes. So the report in front of you today makes three recommendations. It's recommending that we update the Treasury Management Strategy, which will enable the council to raise funds from the public, agree to sign the Green Finance Institute's Local Climate Bond Pledge, and the third recommendation is to develop a local climate bond issuance proposal, and then to seek full approval to launch the Sheffield Climate Bond in 2025. So should the committee endorse these recommendations, work will commence in early New Year on ongoing work to identify potential projects within our existing capital programme, as well as potential projects that may arise from some of the work, such as our renewable energy scoping study, in order to develop that pipeline of projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leila, Richard, was there anything further you wanted to add?
No, that's all right for me, just any questions, really.
Great, okay. Thank you. I've got councillor Miskell you've indicated, and I see councillor Johnson and councillor Otten. Sorry, councillor Hurst as well. Councillor Miskell, may I come to you, councillor Hurst?
Thank you very much for bringing the reports today. I think it's probably important, and no doubt all of us will say, make a similar contribution to thank the really small but excellent sustainability team that we do have in the council, and that team does provide such an important resource for us as an organisation and us as a city, and is really, really crucial in terms of our response as a city to dealing with and addressing the climate challenge. I'm particularly excited to see that we will shortly be introducing a climate bond in Sheffield. I know that it will be, hopefully, one of the first climate bonds that we have in this city, but it certainly won't be the last, because from talking to colleagues around the country that have introduced climate bonds, I know that they have been incredibly successful. And I think they've been successful because not only are they a great opportunity for us to be able to finance our green ambitions as a city, they're also an opportunity for residents and businesses to get behind a number of really key projects that help us to achieve net zero in our city, and importantly, to make those tangible returns on investments. And I'm sure that thousands of businesses will get behind this alongside residents in our city, because actually people do want to get behind collectively our response to the climate emergency. And I think it also gives us an opportunity as a city, doesn't it, to work alongside community energy schemes, as well as explore other opportunities, as the report talks about, in terms of blended finance approaches, which I know have been really popular in many cities. And Chair, I think it's important to say, and alluded to it a second ago, that from talking to other members of UK 100, which are councils that have a, who are very proud of their response to the climate emergency and have a really ambitious approach to it, that I know that actually these climate bonds have gone down really, really well in other cities, in places like Islington, in Camden, Westminster and Lewisham. The report talks about how these projects can help us to lower energy bills in schools, deliver solar panels, retrofit housing, support nature restoration, to expand renewable energy and EV charging. Here in Sheffield, there are lots and lots of different opportunities for us to do that. And as I think Mark said, with a minimum investment of £5, I'm confident that businesses and residents will really embrace that opportunity. So I think that this should be something that we should all get behind, I've no doubt that the city will get behind it. I think it's also important to note that this is just one aspect of how we finance our climate response as a city, alongside lots of other opportunities. But I think it's also important to note, isn't it, that since July, we have seen a complete step change, a breath of fresh air in London when it comes to a new government that is really tackling some of the challenges when it comes to climate, and will be continuing to work with DESNERS and GB Energy and partners across the city to create a pipeline of projects that can be funded by things like the climate bond. by things like the climate bond, but also through other methods as well.
Thank you councillor Miskell, councillor Hurst please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, very simple question, Mark. What appetite have you identified for the creation of this kind of bond in Sheffield?
Thank you, councillor Johnson, please.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I'm just reflecting on councillor Miskell's optimism for the new government. But I think it's still a good thing to get this local climate bond in the bag. I am glad to see this coming forward now, that's a pretty good thing. Very simple question for me, it's actually when we can expect, when the public can expect to see the offer open so that they can put some money into it.
Thank you, and then councillor Otten, and I'll come back to you in a minute.
Thank you, yes, I must say I'm a little bit concerned about this proposal. I mean, climate bonds can be a great idea, but they aren't necessarily. And I understood the position we'd been put into was to go away and evaluate the opportunity. I was a bit stunned when councillor Miskell said, and we're going to do it, which, I mean, if that's the intention, I misunderstood possibly the paper. It's really important that when you have a scheme like this, it delivers something extra that the people putting their money into it in the best of intention are getting not just the return they're promised, but that it's going to be invested in something that wouldn't otherwise happen. This is the whole problem with carbon offsets, is the proof of the additionality. And what we have here in section six, under alternatives, it says, well, the alternative is to fund the same things using prudential borrowing, which almost admits straight off the bat that there is no additionality in terms of the additional carbon savings that can be achieved by the scheme, in which case, when we say to the public, yes, you can invest your money in this and it will be used for EV infrastructure or biodiversity or whatever, then there's things that are going to happen anyway. We're not really giving them an honest prospectus on that. And then 6.2, if we didn't do it, this is, we would miss the opportunities for engaging with residents. Well, it doesn't mean, it doesn't say we'd miss out on carbon savings. So maybe it should be called a public engagement bond rather than a climate bond. So I, you know, I have my doubts. I mean, look, I'm happy for us to go away and look at this some further. I'm not necessarily saying to reject this paper, but I do want, I do think these points really have to be addressed in order for us to be able to go to the public and say genuinely, look, if you put your money into this, you'll get it back. A, you will get it back with interest, and B, it will be spent on something that will bring us closer to a net zero future.
Thank you. So a couple of very specific questions, but I wonder if Mark and colleagues, you might just address councillor Otten's point first and to be really clear with, for the purposes of all of us in the room and everyone watching, what the next steps are and what is happening with this paper, were it to be approved? And then we pick up those two more specific points, thank you.
Yes, so in terms of the next steps, if this paper was to be approved, we're currently having discussions with directors around work that's currently within the capital programme. So there's existing work that may be within the programme for next year or other work that potentially will be coming forward on the programme, where we will be able to use this form of finance to actually fund those activities. There's also other work that we're undertaking as a team. So we're currently about to embark on a piece of work which will look at the potential to use our land, looking at the opportunity to generate renewable energy on council land. Obviously, that's a slightly longer term piece of work, because that will identify those opportunities. And then each of those sites, if there's a potential for a solar farm, for example, that will have to go through the process of identifying, going through mandate stage to full business case. Now, those particular projects, again, similar to some of the types of programmes which other local authorities have funded through this route, will need to be able to develop a robust business case and be able to demonstrate that that investment is either able to provide, for example, electricity sales and be able to finance that debt. But again, some of the other approaches that other local authorities have taken using this programme have been to fund activity that's within their capital programme, like for example, the provision of electric vehicle recharging for their fleet. So they may have actually had that within their programme and they may have been looking at using PWRB to finance that, but they've actually found an alternative route and identified this as a way of being able to fund some of those investments. Or they may have, for example, had a schools programme, similar to some of the work we're looking to develop, where there may be work that they could do with those schools, where there's a financial programme to install solar PV on those roofs. And they've used this as a way of actually being able to finance that, rather than going to the Public Works Loan Board. And that has generally been the way that many of the sort of the local authorities that have used local climate bonds have used this particular product. I don't know if...
You are correct, it doesn't create a new source of borrowing. Well, it's an alternative source, but it doesn't create new money. Whatever we borrow, we have to pay for. So it doesn't allow us to deliver a wider capital programme. It's just a, like you say, there's a tool for engaging the public and telling them what we're doing. And the way we can deliver more is by borrowing in the cheapest way possible. And if this can be part of that, then so be it.
Just to pick up on recommendation three, because I think it does answer Joe's point. I'm just going to read it word for words, there's no confusion. Officers will seek full approval from the SNR Policy Committee to launch a Sheffield Climate Bond in 2025. Great. There were a couple of specific points from councillor Johnson around timeline and around demand from councillor Hurst. I wonder if you could just touch on them as well?
Certainly, Chair. So in terms of the timeline, we've said within the pledge that we have to return back within 18 months with the proposal. Obviously, the work that we're conducting at the moment is around trying to identify potential projects that are within the capital programme, other projects that might fulfil the requirements and actually be projects that we think would be suitable for using as a local climate bond issuance. And that will determine the timescale and how quickly we're able to come back. Because as I say, if we are looking at, for example, some of the work we're doing at the moment around identifying sites on our own land for renewable programmes, going through that process will take longer, so that's probably where the longer end of that 18 month timetable is. But if there are particular projects which we actually see that are much quicker to move, lower hanging fruit, then obviously we'll be coming back in a much shorter timescale on that. And on the question from councillor Hurst relating to appetite, we've not had any formal conversations with people around local climate bonds. That will be the next stage in terms of the work which we'd be undertaking, should the committee approve that moving into this second stage. But we do know that from conversations that we've had in other forums, whether that's some of the discussions that we've had through consultation on the growth plan, conversations with other groups in the city that are delivering similar programmes, that there is actually a demand for this and that people have said, why don't the council consider local climate bonds? And have given examples of other places that have done that, some of the places that Leila's been talking to and making inquiries around how they've gone about delivering their local climate bond schemes. So we know from some of those discussions that there is that demand there, that people are really interested in doing this. And we also know from some of those groups that are actually involved in other programmes like Community Energy, that they see that this is an opportunity here to actually collaborate and work together. Because actually, although in terms of the work we're doing and trying to raise funding from people within the city, but actually I think some of those groups, actually their main purpose and what they're wanting to see is actually the level of renewable energy in the city increasing. And if we're doing that and we're moving that forward, if other organisations are doing that, they're not particularly precious about who's actually doing that. I think they just want to see some of those things improving and increasing in the city. So again, I think there is support for us to move forward with this. So again, that sort of level of opportunity and that conversation that we've had with people saying, is this something the council can do, is certainly there. And it really does provide that sort of opportunity around, as we said earlier, about democratising investment around not just the big players who are getting into investing in energy, that there is the opportunity for local people to invest in local climate projects, not just energy projects. As I said earlier in the presentation, there is a range of different things that we could be considering in this to make that as an attractive an offer to people as possible.
Okay, thank you very much. I've got councillor Agenzio and councillor Uller, and then we'll come back and look at the recommendations, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mark and team, for this. Just my question has come on the back of something you were saying just a couple of minutes ago. Will there be any kind of provision when we plan? I know the time scales are going to be whatever they're going to be, to ensure that the projects are not all concentrated in the wealthy bits of the city, which is where the investment may come from? So that, you know, there is equity in terms of the benefits of having the green investment across the city, especially in the more deprived parts of the city?
Thank you, councillor Uller, please.
Thank you, Chair. My question is, the crowdfunding platform is FCA regulated. Will the climate bonds, will that be FCA backed? Bonds are not typically FCA backed, so I just want a clarification on that. And talking about demand, you're saying there are demand for this. Do we already have, do we have identified projects for these funds to be invested in those projects? I would just want to also highlight the point you said, is it Richard, Richard here? You said it's an alternative form of funding and we would naturally go for the cheapest option. What sort of rates would a resident get from these bonds? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So back to the team for some questions. All right, let me take one final one, Joe, and then we'll draw a line there, because...
Can I come with a comment at the end?
Go for it now.
Okay, now, well, look, I just think, I just think, given that it's been clarified that the bonds are not going to increase our, because they're kind of borrowing, I suppose, they come within the whole borrowing envelope. But the proposition that we would give to people is, you know, if you've got £100 that you want to lend, if you lend it to us, we'll do something we're going to do anyway. If you lend it to a community energy project, they might actually build an extra windmill. I find it difficult to say they should lend the money to us in that scenario. I just, and I have to let this go through, I mean, at this point, but I just think we should reflect on this a little bit more before it comes back for a proposal, you know, within discussions. Is that, would that be acceptable? Just so that we can, we can be clear that the offer we can make to the people of Sheffield is what they expect it to be. I think people are saying, can't we have climate bonds so we can do good things? They're expecting when they say that, that that will be extra money to do extra, to do extra good things and not an alternative to the Public Works Loan Board.
Look, I don't think anyone here today is denying that there's further work to be done. You know, the recommendations set out very clearly that, you know, we're agreeing here, there's some decisions, it will come back. I'm not sure necessarily that characterization of how you put the offer is a fair one, and I'll ask the team to comment on that in a moment, but I will just ask Philip to come in, so no, you wanted to come in.
Thank you, Chair. So I think to that, to your point councillor Otten, there are lots of calls on the capital programme. Creating an alternative source of finance for these might free up capital that's then available to fund other things that we want to fund on the capital programme. So it creates an extra layer of funding that we have access to. So there is, there's an opportunity here where we're not necessarily trying to find new schemes to develop for climate purposes, but it's an alternative source of funding that we can only apply to schemes that have that climate element to them, that we can't use climate bonds to fund other works in the capital programme, but we'll be able to use people who'll be borrowing for those. So it just gives us a little bit more headroom in that overall borrowing within Treasury Management.
Okay, I accept that, thank you. I mean, I think it's slightly different from what I understood earlier, but I think if this is all gone into in some detail before it can propose news back, I'll be satisfied, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mark, Leila, Richard, do you want to pick up those further points and those specific points from councillor Uller as well?
Thank you, yes. So if I just quickly, just picking up on councillor Otten's point and just a further point to what Philip was saying, is that as well as creating that extra headroom and the additional borrowing, I think the other thing that, where there is value is one of the conversations that Will Stewart's had with investors is actually around how some of these approaches around things like local community bonds are actually enabling investment to happen at a relatively small scale, but then actually that's then providing the groundwork in the sense for bigger projects to move forward and other investments to come in from that. So there are places that are using that and then actually other institutional investors are seeing some of those wider benefits and recognizing that actually there's scope to then expand that. So in a way, it's also another way of leveraging additional funding through, albeit not directly in that project, but over longer periods of time that might actually enable other money to come into the city on the back of some of these smaller investments. So just picking up those questions in order. Councillor Agenzio's question around equality and looking at where these projects will be focused. Obviously, that is certainly something which we will be doing. We'll be looking at these through that lens and making sure that from the initial outset, through whether it's the process of equality impact assessment, but also looking at the locations, that that will be part of the consideration of where the schemes are located. And they won't be driven purely by that mechanism around, well, where do we think that investment's likely to be coming from? And that's where we'll be focusing the projects. So yes, that's certainly something which will be, will be part of that consideration. Richard, I don't know if you're able to pick up there?
So yes, to your point councillor, I think you were saying, where does the liability lie for the debt? It's ultimately with the council. If something happened to the funding platform, we would still be responsible for repaying that debt, as you would expect. The rates that are on offer are linked to PWRB, so it really does depend on the timing of when we take this debt on, if we decide to go ahead and do it. They undercut the Public Works Loan Board, so at the moment, today, you'd be paying about 4.9% for that debt and they would undercut that, they claim by 20 base points, so it'd be about 4.7% that the public would get. But again, it depends on timing and those rates will change every day, so.
Great, thank you. And the SCA, can I? Councillor Uller, do you want to just, you asked a question around the SCA? Perfect. Okay, thank you all, a really helpful discussion. Thank you for your answers to those really helpful questions, I'm grateful. So a number of recommendations, that we agree to update the Treasury Management Strategy to include local climate bonds to enable the council to raise funds from the public, to agree to sign the Green Finance Institute's Local Climate Bond Pledge, and to agree to officers developing a local climate bond issuance proposal, including a green finance framework, and that officers will seek full approval from SNR Policy Committee to launch a Sheffield Climate Bond in 2025. Members happy to support those recommendations. Okay, thank you all very much indeed. Thank you for your work. Right, item 14. Is the response to a council motion from September 4th council around helping vulnerable residents. Tom, Keith, thank you very much for your patience. Thank you for sitting in a warming chamber for a couple of hours. For the benefit of everyone here and people watching at home and maybe later, do you want to just introduce yourselves and then briefly introduce the report, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, I'm Tom Smith, I'm Director of Customer Experience and Communities.
And I'm Keith Ireland, I'm the Head of Service for the Cost of Living Support Hub.
So thank you, Chair, I'll just briefly introduce the paper and then we can take some questions. So on 4th September, council resolved to request this committee to consider building on the success of the South Lac Cost of Living in person support pilot and requesting us to bring a proposal forward to introduce a similar scheme across Sheffield. And also requested this committee to consider commissioning further services to commence an awareness campaign to maximise the uptake of pension credits. Further to that, council also received a petition on the 6th of November 2024 requesting the council to restore the winter fuel allowance. And that petition was referred to this committee on this day as well. So this report seeks to address both the council motion of the 4th September and the petition. Just to briefly talk through a little bit of background, so the multi-agency Cost of Living Response in Sheffield has been in place since 2022, but builds upon the Covid response and Covid support that was in place prior to that. It's funded from the Household Support Fund, which is a grant from central government, so is in, by its very nature, a temporary arrangement to some extent. It's recent, we're really pleased to say that we've recently had the funding from the Household Support Fund extended for 2025-26, so we will be able to continue. But the indication is in the guidance that we've got associated with that is that the expectation is we need to consider longer term approaches to this through income maximisation, getting people to get the benefits that they're entitled to. And therefore, we need to think about a longer term model ultimately in the council to support some of that. In terms of the work we've done since the council motion, so in August 2024, we got a letter from MHCLG in response to the removal of universal winter payment, asking... in response to the removal of universal winter payment, asking us to support the uptake of pension credit. We immediately put that into action and since then we've worked in partnerships, this is and advice Sheffield, developed a joint campaign to increase the take-up of pension credit. That campaign's reached well over 7,000 low income households so far, directly through letter and many more through other communications channels. It's relatively early days in terms of the impact of that, but we have seen significant additional uptake through Keith's service. And I've been able to support a significant number of additional people through that. And you can see some of the impact within the report, which I won't go through in detail. In terms of the South Lac pilot itself, in this financial year, £400,000 worth of additional budget was allocated to each local area committee to provide some additional cost of living support work. And the South Lac particularly decided to use their funding on face-to-face intervention, focusing on increasing the amount of money in people's pockets through that face-to-face approach. That pilot has resulted in, we think, evaluating around about an additional £170,000 of income into that local area through benefit uptake. And that's been delivered in partnership with the South Lac voluntary community faith and social enterprise sector in that area and to set up eight support and advice sessions, lots and lots of communications and promotion in that area. There's one example within the report, it is one example where one pensioner over the course of four appointments was able to claim over £24,000 of additional income that they were entitled to. So real impact actually in terms of that pilot work. So that kind of leads us on to the future bit. So we've, we've had this arrangement in place for, if you count the Covid bit as well, probably four or five years. It's been really organic development in terms of the service and it's been kind of just needs must really to some extent. We get the grant, we need to continue, we need to put that out. It's been, I'd say wholly grant funded and it's clear that it's delivering real benefit. But if we want to maximise that benefit, ultimately really what we need to look at is how it better integrates across the wider council and how it really starts to work and integrate with the voluntary community faith and sector all going forward to get really real value out of that. So off the back of that, we proposed to evaluate what we've currently got in place over a period of time and to look to do that and look to create a much more integrated service across various places, working with really closely with the voluntary sector to do that and to define our role and the voluntary sector's role in that place. And the report for that will be brought to this committee. So effectively what we're recommending and the four recommendations associated with this report are just to note the work that we've been doing since the council resolution and that work to increase pension credits, to endorse a proposal to increase some targeted support for benefits uptake, building on that learning from the South Lac pilot. Probably worth saying that that will be within existing resource. So effectively what we'll be doing is taking some people who aren't necessarily currently face-to-face and move them more into some face-to-face support roles. Agree to evaluate the current cost of living hub model in partnership with the voluntary community faith and social enterprise sector and bring that more into line with our future Sheffield model, looking at linking that with our community strategy and customer experience strategies. And then agree that we'll bring a report back on that into autumn next year to this committee to bring a way forward and to link with the budget saving process for 2026, 2027.
Much indeed. Keith, is there anything you wanted to add at this stage?
No, nothing from me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much for the report. And yeah, we're not just, I think, noting the work that's been done. I think we're thanking you for the work that's been done. And I will just draw members' attention to Appendix A, which really significantly sets out the work that's been done here in Sheffield, pioneering work to make sure that people who are eligible for free school meals are auto-enrolled. And on page 302, talks about how the real total value of this work is around £16 million worth of funding going into schools. This is a significant amount of money that's come about from some really pioneering work from within Sheffield City Council officer team. So I think I particularly want to draw people's attention to that and thank them for developing that work. So councillor Bellbin, councillor Johnson, councillor Crossman.
Thank you and thank you. I echo that really to draw attention to some of the amazing work that has been done by the team that I'm quite convinced will have saved lives actually over the last few years, really, really significant. And I'm really pleased to see some of the recommendations inside the report as well. I think what we have done, and as you say, it kind of flowed on from Covid and the response to the pandemic, we set up our response to the cost of living crisis as a crisis emergency response. But as that has evolved, you know, we are not talking about a crisis in that same sense anymore. We are talking, you know, about that structural inequality that we all know exists inside the city and thinking on a broader basis on how we tackle that. And I know we agreed earlier this year that the cost of living strategy group, that was kind of a cross-sector group, and we stood that group down on the basis of it being that emergency response and said we would look again. And what I don't quite see in the report is how we are, I know it talks about how we will evaluate the cost of living hub model involved voluntary sector in that, but I'm not quite clear in terms of kind of governance and how we're responding in that cross-sector way, how we're taking that forward. And similarly, I'm not against any of the recommendations of the report, but I suppose it just feels a little bit mix and match to me in that I know it's come from a motion to full council, so probably that's behind it. But it feels like we've agreed to take forward certain parts of strategy, but we haven't, there's not really an approach to how we're forming that strategy with the rest of the sector. And again, it's that partnership working that feels really, really crucial and making sure that we've got our partners working alongside us on this because, you know, we know that, you'll know, Keith, I'm sure from your work in the hub, we have limited resource across the city to tackle this. We've got some amazing people doing some amazing work, but it's really, really important that we're not duplicating, that we're not stepping on each other's toes, that we are using the resource that we've got in the most effective way possible. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about how we're going to work with our partners and make sure we're working effectively together.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson, please.
Thanks very much. Just to say, yeah, I'm really pleased to see this come forward. I have quite a lot about this because I know the Cledis Valley councillors won't shut up about it. But I mean, seriously, it's a really good thing. I mean, Keith, thanks for bringing this forward because I think you've been in these meetings since very early on, where it started with something quite small. And I just want to say, I think there is something really powerful about the local authority taking charge of this rather than just asking S and Vice to work on it. And it's partly because of my experience of working in advice services and working in the council. Within the council, we actually have a huge opportunity to leverage in all that money from outside because S and Vice, they spend a lot of time trying to get to the bottom, getting basic information that we already have within our different services. So the efficiency that we have is actually really good if we can do that. But I just finally want to draw attention just to the huge scale of the potential there. And you're talking about £230 million a year potential income to Sheffield, mostly from central government. And this is a really good thing that benefits uptake. Not only is it direct financial benefit for people who generally are the people most in need, it all goes in from central government to Sheffield's local economy. Because, you know, the people who get the benefit will spend it locally, they will spend it on paying our rents, paying our council taxes. That goes to fund all our services that we do. And it's a real, it's a real no-brainer when you think about it in that way. So, I mean, thanks. Yeah, let's have more of this.
Councillor Crossland, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tom and Keith, for all the work that you've done on this and for all the work that you do supporting people of the city as well. Councillor Bellbin actually said a lot of what I was going to say about working with our partners and other stakeholders within the city because ultimately the council can't do everything, but we can get people round the table. When we work with people, we do, we do things better. But I think ultimately it's, I think the cost of living team do need to work really hard with taking down those structural inequalities within the city. To be fair, like, I don't expect a response from this, but it's a shame that you've had to spend so much time over the last few months dealing with, well, cleaning up the government's mess with the pensions winter fuel allowance cut. So one of my questions is, did we get any extra support to contact the 7,000 people that we think are eligible for pensions credit as a local authority, or did we have to foot that bill? And then secondly, with regards to the cost of living hubs and the the South Lac pilot, how much of this was funded from the SPF as well?
And then lastly, councillor Smith, and then I'll come back.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not an expert in this and I'll be brutally honest, I didn't understand some of the jargon. What I did hear was a lot of praise for the different way of doing things that was being piloted in the South Lac that delivered real benefit to people in challenging times. And then in the next sentence I heard, we won't be doing anything to roll that out for more than a year because we can't get a report back to this committee until autumn 2025, which probably means it would be implemented there. So if there's a really good idea that's helping more people, is there anything we can do to just get on with it more quickly? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tom, Keith, do you want to come back and perhaps clarify on that last point from councillor Smith in particular? Thank you.
I'll take the last point first and then I'll maybe, Keith can maybe work on some of the other things. So so the, I guess what we've tried to do in this report and in our response to the council motion and the petitions is to make sure that we, we do reflect on what's been fed back in terms of the South pilot being a good scheme and do our best to extend that as far as we can. But balancing that with the fact that at the moment this is entirely funded through temporary grant funding. So our biggest issue frankly is this money at the moment only runs until, well, we've got confirmation for the next financial year. So we have certainty until the 31st of March 2026 at the moment. So we have no certainty that we can continue any of this work after that, which is why we've suggested doing this, doing the review actually, because we will have, I guess, one of two options ultimately. Either we will need to mainstream this work into the overall way the council does things and fund it through general fund with all the challenges that that presents, or we will have to hope that further grant funding appears to support it. So that's why we haven't brought forward a permanent proposal, councillor Smith, because we simply haven't got permanent funding at the moment. Keith, I don't know whether you wanted to address maybe the first point that councillor Bellbin was making and engagement that councillor Crossman was making as well.
Yeah, happy to do that. I think we've had throughout the cost of living funds and Covid, a real partnership response. And I think absolutely around that, that standing down of that strategic group, I think we weren't clear on then what was next. And I think this is that paper that's starting to try and move into looking at what is, what is next. I think under our communities' strategy or our approach to a community strategy that was agreed at previous S and R, we have talked about, you know, giving that greater consideration to the respective roles and the expectations that we each have of each other and our best, we can utilise our collective strengths and assets to deliver for the people of Sheffield. I think there's a DPH report as well, which is going to be coming to this committee. It's going to, you know, further highlight some of that inequality. And I think a lot of that learning that's come out of that pilot is ultimately about different ways of working, being more proactive ourselves with our own data sets, identifying households, you know, some of the work with pension credit, contacting households that we can see that aren't in receipt of benefits that they're legally entitled to be, and actually being more proactive in getting out there. And actually working alongside the voluntary sector to perhaps look at perhaps other different ways that we can all, we can all work in this. But I do see that actual kind of engagement and valuation has been a key part within our formation of our communities' strategy. I could just move on to councillor Crossman's question. Yeah. So I think we didn't receive any extra support from the government in terms of resources for that, for that campaign. So we drew on, on we've got, you know, existing. And I would say that that's, that's been a kind of familiar thing really over the, certainly over the last four years of the sort of quick asks and the need to kind of get out there and coordinate a response, very well supported by our partners such as such as the S and Vice Sheffield. And that's very much all been done within, within, within just existing, existing resources. The £40,000 for the South Lac that used came from a council motion. So that was, that was what that was funded for. But in that area, you know, we have had the Shared Prosperity Fund and we have got a number of welcome places and community development. So that, you know, that was aided by partly of that integrated offer of being able to get comms out to different services, targeted communications. And in the example of the pensioner, he'd actually dropped into a service, I think it was Shipshape previously and was able to be, he didn't have a phone. So he was able to be directed down to somewhere where he could get that help. And then a key part of that help was us really looking at our own system. So I think eight, eight and a half thousand pounds out of that help was council tax repayment. So things that we have access to that really we should be looking at a little bit, a little bit differently.
Okay. Thank you all very much then for those questions and for those answers. So four recommendations ahead of us, to note the work undertaken to increase pension credits and to promote the overall uptake of unclaimed benefits, as powerfully illustrated just there. To endorse the proposal to increase targeted support of benefits take-up, building on the learning from the South Lac pilot and to continue this work across the city for 12 months. Agreed to evaluate the current cost of living hub model in partnership with voluntary community faith and social enterprise sector. And to agree that a report is presented to this committee in autumn next year. Are people happy to support those recommendations? Great. Thank you all very much indeed. That is the last agenda item for today. That is the last agenda item for 2024. Thank you all very much for your contributions today and throughout the year and have a very happy Christmas when it arrives. I'm told it's next week. It feels like there's quite a bit to do before then. But thanks, everybody. Cheers.